Greetings and salutations all. Thank you for attending this special board meeting on April 26th. We are starting at 5:37. Our apologies for the late start. Roll call, please. Mr. Atkins.
Mr. Alexander.
Present.
Ms. Autry.
Present.
Dr. Hall.
Aye.
Ms. Jackson.
Present.
Mrs. McKittrick.
Here.
Mr. Perry.
I am here.
Okay.
Thank you. Next, we'll proceed to item 1.2, the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Alexander, would you lead us in the pledge, sir?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next, we're, so we have calls for excitement, some celebration. We, we're here to welcome our newest board member, Dr. Renee Monar. Welcome, welcome. But I guess you won't officially be the new board member until we actually swear you in, so, so we're gonna do that next. And so we also want to welcome Judge Jennifer Towell here. Thank you, Judge Towell, for coming out tonight. We certainly appreciate your time. And so we're gonna ask you to, if you want to step over there, there's flags, and also if you have family, Dr. Monar, you know, as soon as we administer the oath, well, if you want to bring them up, we could take a couple pictures as well, so.
Yes, thank you very much. Okay, could you please raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as a member of the Board of Education of the Akron City School District, Summit County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and here and after to be enacted during your continuance in said office and until your successor is elected and qualified?
I do.
Congratulations, Dr. Renee T. Molinar. (applause). Right here. Wonderful. Congratulations. Very happy for you.
Okay, so, is your family here?
They are.
Yeah, we'll do our thing.
So let's do, so let's do. (applause).
Hey, smile, make some picture, okay? Hi, guys.
You look great. Now, let me see if my camera's gonna work. You know, sometimes it does, and sometimes it doesn't. Really? Can I go this way? All right, my phone is not helping.
I'll do it. I got it right here.
I'm so sorry.
All right, you ready? You guys are terrific hooking band. All right, on three, one, two, three. I took five or six. Thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Welcome, welcome. So, so excited to be working with you as we move forward. So next, we're going to move to request to address the board. And let me see here. Okay, we'll start with, oh, do we have our, our three-minute timer ready to go? Sorry. And while, and while we're doing that, I will read the preamble. So with regard to request to address the board, participants will not be permitted to speak on matters related to vendors, business matters, formal complaints, grievances, specific students or student records, personnel matters, and potential or pending legal matters. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less. The board will not respond, but will sign through the superintendent the appropriate person for follow-up. Having said that, we'll move to the first person on the list, Kathy Williams. Please step to the podium.
My name is Kathy Williams, and I was a student at Leggett. It was a few years ago, but way back then, my absolutely wonderful, loving mother was very concerned about my education, but she simply did not have time to be very involved. She was struggling to feed her family in a neighborhood where crime and violence were common. However, she knew I had a safe haven at Leggett. She knew I was getting a good education, because I came home excited about what was happening at school. She knew my teachers were excellent, because I talked about them all the time. Now, the faces and names of the staff have changed, but the dedication to their students has not. Leggett is still a safe haven. It's like a garden where crime and poverty cannot come in, because the staff do not allow it. The students at Leggett are fragile young plants. The care, the nurturing, and the safety provided at Leggett are absolutely crucial for their growth. If they are ripped out of this loving environment, their roots will never have a chance to grow strong. The STEM middle schoolers already have healthy, strong roots. They'll survive being transplanted, but the Leggett students will not. If we work together as a community, I'm sure there's a solution. Renovation of the Morley Health Center would be ideal. Local corporations like Bridgestone, Goodyear, Cleveland Clinic, they would have an interest in funding STEM education. Then, the STEM students would have a centralized campus, and the Leggett students won't have to be uprooted. They can continue to thrive in the nurturing care and safety consistently provided at Leggett Community Learning Center. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Cameron Stalnicker.
I am in fourth grade at Leggett CLC. I've been at Leggett since second grade. The teachers at Leggett care about me and make me feel safe. When I went to school in Canton, it was horrible. All kinds of kids picked on me. Some of the teachers didn't care. At Leggett, I have all kinds of friends. I play football and basketball with them every day at recess. The teachers always ask me how I am doing and care about me. I have two little brothers that go to Leggett. One is in first grade and one is in second grade. I don't want to brag, but they really look up to me, and they want to play sports just like me. I'm like a hero to them. If you close Leggett, they will miss all the great teachers I had. I want them to stay at Leggett. It is the best school. I can't believe that you want to close it. My little brothers want to have a career in life. The teachers at Leggett will be able to help them chase their dreams. That might happen at another school someday. I want my baby sister to go to Leggett. She is one month old. Please do not close Leggett. My brothers and sister are counting on you. Thank you.
Thanks, Cameron. That was well said. Next, we have Jaclyn, is it Jacobo? Am I saying that right? Okay.
Hi, my name is Jaclyn Jacobo. First, I would like to thank you for allowing me to speak today. I'm a fifth-grade student at Leggett who has been here since kindergarten. I have been a student ambassador for two years. Ambassador are student leaders at Leggett CLC who work hard in school, demonstrate good behavior, and are helpful and kind to others. The ambassadors greet school visitors, help families and events, and help new students. As a student ambassador, I feel that I need to speak up for the voices, the student voices at Leggett. One day during indoor recess, our teacher told us that we were gonna watch a video, but the video was about the University of Akron had given property to the Board of Education so they could build a school. That is where they built STEM High School. The University of Akron said that they would only give them to them for 10 years. Now that that 10 years is up, 10 years is a long time to figure out our plan before that when that time limit is up. Yet they did not make a plan, and now they're trying to make a plan very quickly. And in that plan, they are talking about moving STEM Middle School to Leggett CLC, even though Leggett is getting more and more kids every year. Did you know that we had to turn our art room into art on a cart? Our music teacher has to teach in the cafeteria, because there are so many students enrolling at Leggett. There's simply not enough space at Leggett for the STEM program. The STEM program needs science labs, which Leggett does not have or have a space for. I ask myself, why do we have to face the consequences of their poor planning? I feel bad for the students at STEM and Leggett, because this is going to have to disrupt our education. Why should the students at Leggett have to get separated from their friends and favorite teachers because the district did not plan ahead? Why should the staff get separated from the best colleagues who work great together? Additionally, our Leggett, our school has a lot of history. Did you know that Murmur Leggett was the first superintendent of Akron Public Schools? He was also a former teacher and a principal. I do not think that we should get rid of our school that holds so much history and meaning to our community. Thank you for your time, and we hope you can all find a better solution.
Thank you, Jaclyn. Next, we have, thank you. Can we have Tiffany Taylor, please?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tiffany Taylor, and I am also a substitute teacher for Akron Public Schools. So I'm also a mom of three Leggett scholars that are here today to speak. Today is not only a great day for us to give our opinions, but also a great moment in our kids' lives that will allow them to not only speak on issues that directly affect their lives, but also witness other people speak on facts and their opinions and exercise their right to speak in hopes of being heard. I love Leggett for so many reasons, but the biggest reason is the progress that my children have made. I have three very different kids that struggle with different disabilities. While their grades, improvement socially with peers, behavior, confidence, attitude, amongst so many other things are great reasons for us to be here today, our belief in why Leggett should still stand is most important. Leggett and its scholars and staff members have become our family over the past four years. If Leggett is to be the new home for STEM, where will our kids go? That's one of the most, the most talked about issues in our house, you know, for where they, where they will go if Leggett is gone. I have two fourth graders and a fifth grader. My fourth grader is one of them. He is on the spectrum, and he would have to switch to another school for fifth grade and then also for sixth grade. And we were hoping that he would be able to finish out his elementary, you know, career at Leggett. That's very, very important. We could not have gotten where we are today without Leggett, with these kids. They come from all different places. I have my niece, I have my son, and I have my stepson, all different, all raised differently in my home. And one of my kids have found the love of learning from being at Leggett. She was bullied in Cleveland Public Schools, and I kind of just wrapped her out of that situation, because I thought that Leggett was the best school for her to go to. The progress that my son has made, that is on the spectrum, I don't think that, you know, I sub at so many schools, and all the schools are great, but for him, this school is great for him. When we need to make that transition into middle school, we will, but right now, it's very important for him to stay where he is, in my opinion. They are straight-A students, and it took a long time for us to get there. My stepson, he came from plenty of different schools. He's a student ambassador now. He was getting suspended, it seemed like, every week, you know? But it took for the staff members, the great staff members at Leggett, to help us get to this place with our children. And so that's why I feel like, you know, we are all here, and the principal, staff members, they all hold this together. You know, putting them all in different places, putting all the kids in different places, I, I just don't know how it's gonna affect them. And we always want our U to have the chance to be the best that they can. And I believe that having the staff members and the, and the scholars all in the place that they are in now is the best place that they can be. So, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
I don't know if it's evening or good afternoon. It feels like an evening. Good evening, I'm Tony Gosmer. I started with Akron Public Schools in 1997 as a tutor at VORIS, and I began my teaching at the then Leggett Elementary, 619 Sumner Street, and that would have been August of 1998. I'm currently a fourth-grade teacher at Leggett Community Learning Center, 333 East Thornton Street. I spent 25 years, I've been, I've spent the last 25 years in the Leggett community. Over the years, I've observed the closure of buildings across the district. Hotchkiss and Crosby come to mind. They were small neighborhood schools with low enrollment, and the buildings were clearly showing their age. There was probably some pushback from the community to keep these buildings open, but overall, I think students and families' new closure was inevitable. Fast forward today, April 26th, 2023, I can think of roughly 370 reasons not to close this healthy and functioning school and cast its students and staff to the wind. Strong communities, strong community schools are a treasure, a safe place for children and families to gather, build long-lasting friendships, begin to grasp the excitement of learning something new, feel comfortable assimilating to the fabric of northeast Ohio while still celebrating one's own uniqueness under the close supervision of caring teachers. Leggett CLC is just such a place for so many in Akron, but especially important to the Mon and Chanawood communities. This is their school, and we are their teachers. And through the course of a typical learning day, we are so much more. You've asked us repeatedly to build relationships. We have done that, and we have gone above and beyond in building family relationships. I know this is not unique to Leggett. There are great buildings across the district that are family, but we're the building that's at risk of having all these bonds dissolved and having them scattered across the city. I urge you to maintain and promote Leggett's vital importance as a gem in the community and not disperse its families or dilute its power. Thank you.
Next is Kamari Wright.
Do not close down our school. I am in kindergarten at Leggett CLC. Leggett is a fun school. I have a lot of fans. We have Tiger Time and field shirts. I get to read books. I learn to read chapter books. I like my teacher, because she is the best teacher. Please do not close Leggett till sincerely, Kamari Wright.
Great job. (applause).
Thank you so much.
That's impressive.
That's very, very good.
Next is Arianna Willen.
I really want to follow up Kamari. And Tony has me questioning whether I should say good evening or not, but good evening and good afternoon. My name is Arianna Willen, and I'm the program manager at Akron Parks Collaborative, or APC. For those of you who are unfamiliar, APC is a local nonprofit organization that works to engage our Akron neighbors around the creation, revitalization, and sustainability of city park spaces. I'm here tonight to tell you about our ongoing project at Boss Park, which sits directly adjacent to Leggett CLC. And it's right here, how close they are together. Last July, our board selected Boss Park as one of two Akron Parks Challenge winners. The Akron Parks Challenge is a citywide contest through which any group of community members can apply to win funds to reimagine and transform their neighborhood park. The Leggett Elementary community was actively involved in the Boss Park application process and has held leadership roles on the planning team every step of the way. Seven of our core team members are Leggett students, parents, or teachers. Generally, after our Parks Challenge winners are chosen, the core team members share their individual visions for the park's transformation. We then process that information and put out a neighborhood-wide survey to gather input from the larger community. From the information gathered in University Park, creating a nature play space ranked third out of 14 potential improvements. Nature play provides the opportunity for children ages 2 to 9 to engage in outdoor unstructured play featuring natural elements rather than conventionally manufactured play equipment. For example, our team has been planning on installing tree stumps for children to explore, climb upon, or jump across. As I've mentioned, this is geared toward younger elementary-age children, so Leggett's presence had a large impact on the planning team and larger communities' decision to provide such a nature play space. Another survey item that ranked high was an outdoor classroom space with a natural birding area. Tony, who spoke tonight, a core Boss Park planning team member and fourth-grade teacher for 25 years, described in our meetings how several of his students, notably often those with behavioral difficulties, had really taken to bird watching and learning about local birds. The idea to incorporate this interest was presented to the community and ultimately chosen as one of the features that will be a part of the park's transformation. We then reached out to and formed a partnership with Dr. Laura Rokatynetz, a biology field station director at the University of Akron. Through this partnership, Dr. Rokatynetz has pledged to provide native birding books, binoculars, and educational visits for the fourth graders at Leggett as we finalize the design and build, as we finalize the design and build the birding area at Boss Park. As I've outlined, the community has chosen in many ways to tailor the upcoming improvements at Boss Park to the elementary-age students at Leggett. If nothing else, I hope I've presented new information for you to consider here tonight, information that might thoughtfully inform the final decisions yet to be made regarding the proposed location changes involving Leggett CLC and the STEM schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next, we have Nan Ang.
I'm a fifth grader at Leggett CLC. I have been at Leggett since kindergarten. I always liked this school. This school is a good school, so why shut this school down? There is a good, there is good staff and student here. Today at this meeting, I request not to shut down the Leggett school. What I like about this school is that they give us a reward that we get to earn every two weeks. I like the staff here, I like the playground here. It will be a struggle for the, for all the parents if they have to enroll their kids in a different school. Leggett always has always been the greatest school. Since I'm going to STEM Middle School, I would like another three year, three year here, but I still want to visit Leggett when I get a car. I also, I am also going to patrol around Leggett when I am a cop. I will also visit my teacher.
Hi, I am Hong Tala from Akron, Ohio, Leggett CLC. I am from the Mon community, and I do not, I do not support this idea of closing Leggett. Closing Leggett is a mistake, and I do not understand why you want to move STEM into Leggett. STEM is way more advanced than Leggett. STEM has labs and a lot of space to do experiments. STEM is also a lot bigger than Leggett. STEM also has a, a good, a good learning programs that Leggett does not have. Most of, most, or if not all of the Mon community, or has or is been like one time. Leggett means a lot to me, and, and I hope I made it pretty clear to you that I don't want, I don't want this to happen. Thank you.
So I had, so thank you, Hong Tala, and thank you, Nan Ang. I have a Raymond Rotian, is that Hong Tala's father? Did you want to speak, sir? Okay, please. Your son did a very nice job. Thank you.
When he came to the state, he wasn't born. My name's Raymond Rotian. I'm a refugee from Burma. We are the first, we Mon, the first group came to Akron. So where we came and we only have like a few people in, in, around Leggett. So we don't, a lot of people, we only have like about 10 people at the time. We don't have Nepalese, Karen, not even refugees, South Asia. So we found Leggett and we put our kid. We fear that Leggett is safe for our childrens. So why I came to the United States, I would like to tell you guys a little bit. Because I was forced to locate it from my village to another. Why? Because we have natural resources, like natural gas. So we don't know we have, our village have natural resources like that. So our great-great-grand estate, we growing up like that. So, and then, one day, government came to us and then forced us to locate it. So we don't know where we gotta go. So some protests over there because of dictator. So they got arrested and then go in jail. Me, I'm teenager, so I don't know. So I joined the army. We call it the Mon National Liberation Army. So I join, I fight then. And finally, I came to the state. So, and then we fear that, I fear, not we, I fear that, oh, okay, this is a good place for our community. So we found our Mon community. Now we have like about over 300 family in, around that area. So we found this is like our backbone. So I don't want to fear that we're gonna force again and we have to fight again. Thank you so much.
(applause). Thank you so much. Um, next we have, um, Katal Raymond. Can you just?
Katal Ramon.
Katal Ramon, okay, thank you. Apologies.
First, I would like to thank you all for allowing me the chance to speak. My name is Katal Ramon. I am currently a junior at Akron Early College High School. I am also a former student at Leggett. This school is the foundation of my education, mine, and many others, especially from the Maun community. Akron is home to the second-largest population of Maun people. Historically, my people were displaced from war and discrimination. We have, we have finally found a home right here in Akron. For the past 20 years, we've been building relationships with Leggett's staff and the surrounding community. This school is one of the only places where we can come together as a community. This school not only allows us to learn the American way of life, but allows us to keep our culture alive. The staff here understands our needs and understands that not all of us may understand English, but they work with us patiently. Students aren't the only ones that find comfort at Leggett, but our parents too. My own single mother struggled to make ends meet, but the one thing she was not worried about was my education, because she knew that Leggett was a school that accommodated all of the Maun kids and gave us opportunities that my mom never had. Closing this school not only separates the neighborhood kids, but an entire community. Thank you.
Turrioni, I'm sorry, Turriona Williams? Am I saying that right? I'm sorry, Teriyana? Excuse me. Okay. Next, we'll move to, um, Ang, Ang Sorn Peng? I'm looking at you for my pronunciation. I keep looking at you. Okay, Ang, okay, Ang Sorn Peng. I keep looking at you, okay? Thank, thank you for the head nod, okay, all right.
Hello, my name is Ang Peng. I was born in the United States. I don't want Leggett to be took over. This school is helpful to our Maun community. This school has unique things that other schools don't do, and this school is not built for a school like STEM. Also, this school is not like other schools. This school has high enrollment and there are more kids at STEM than Leggett. If Leggett gets took over, there will be more kids in the Leggett building than right now. There are bigger schools than Leggett, than Leggett, and they can be took over. This school is not big enough for STEM. There can be kids wanting to attend Leggett, and some of them might not know that Leggett might be shut down. This school is a helpful place for many communities around the area. This, this school had Maun kids since the opening and they grew up to be successful. If Leggett closes, many families and communities will be sad. This school represents so much for most families and communities. The teachers and staff are nice and the school provides good education and other needs. The teachers help the students by teaching them things that may be necessary and that make everyone's fear included. If Leggett closes, many people would be devastated. Thank you.
I've got, next I've got Jonathan Taylor.
How y'all doing today? I work Thursday, so it's good mornings, everybody, you know? And I just want to say, uh, in my opinion, this is a continuous, continuous process to take away from these children. These kids ain't never did nothing but try, try their hardest every day, especially with the staff. The staff has been there for my family for at least the last six years. And every single last step of the way, I could depend on these staff members. The diversity that they show these children, especially in the building, my, my, my children play with different kids every day, you understand what I'm saying? Like all these children, like my wife already said, came from different backgrounds. They all had their own struggles. They all had their own challenges. They all, from my, from my perspective, is coming over those challenges. It's gonna help a lot. When I was a child, I could go through a lot every day, but when I went to school, I, I knew I could be myself. I'm guaranteeing myself that my kids will be okay regardless, but I know for a fact where they at right now and where they stand, they're okay. I don't want them trying to start over again. I mean, my son and my niece are going to talk today and they, like, they'll tell you their story on this thing, like, there's no reason, I feel like, for you all to take away from Akron Public Schools to try to help out the University of Akron Public. Like, you know, it's not the same thing. That's not how this works, like, like Akron Public Schools is supposed to be Akron Public Schools, and that's how y'all should look out for these children that's involved in Akron Public Schools. At any time, there is some way y'all can make some time for this STEM thing, that's fine, you know? That's okay, that's good. Help these kids too. But like the, one of those child said, y'all, y'all not helping these kids by taking everything away from them. This man just said he came from a whole nother country and to, and put his kids in his school, and this is, this is where they felt accepted. It started with these schools what it sound like to me, where their kids can, you know, learn, learn and teach them almost, you know? And I just hope that y'all make the right decision, if y'all haven't already made a decision, you know? Thank you for your time.
Lilian Barnes, please.
Oh, I want to really sit up here and say, this is what a community looks like. This is what a community looks like. I'm not here for Leggett. I don't know nothing about, too much about the APS, but I commend these kids right about now. I'm just, I'm overshadowed, because every time I come down here, it's something. But I'm, I'm, I'm blessed to see this is what a community looks like. When we go out here in March, that's what we say. I'm here today as an APS parent speaking for other parents right about now who could not make it. I got a couple of parents out here, um, but we have a concern because of the issue that we just had with Jalen Walker and the bad news that we have received. We now cannot have APD in our schools. We don't trust them. Our parents are fearful, our students are fearful. So we're not asking no more. We're starting to demand APD officers to be removed from our children's school. We should not have the fear if APD is harassing, threatening our children, let alone if we have eight killer cops in our schools. If our demands are not, then we will, I would encourage each and last parent to start making a plan of action to withdraw your children from APS schools. There is other alternatives other than APS. We can, we, the best way to hurt and not sit up here and do what they're saying that we're doing, because it's always been peaceful, is start taking their money. Also, we will help any students, because I spoke to a lot of high school students right about now, they want to plan a walkout on behalf of Jalen Walker. I'm encouraging them to, but I'm asking for each high school principal, as well as this board, not to punish them as they are being protected under their First Amendment rights, as well as to support them with any type of mental health resources without APD or any other resource officers in our schools. Only way to save many schools as parents are removing them is to find another resource other than APD. It also sends many parents of how you all decided to close the school for one day due to hearing the grand jury made a choice of the, not charging the eight officers. Then to reopen the following day. Who do all you support? Is it the APD department or the students and parents? That's who you work for. Question from parents. The first question is, what is the rate of suspension and expulsions for all students of color, but also, also specifically for black students as compared to white ones? Number two question from a parent. What is the racial achievement gap or opportunity gap for the district and what are they actively doing to close that gap? This means what is the gap between white and black, APOC students as far as grades, graduation rates, test scores, athletic recognition merit, and scholarship awards, et cetera? You guys could answer these questions for these parents, so I can make sure that I respond to them appropriately, but we're starting to not ask no more, we're demanding. And I, once again, congratulate these babies for coming out. I hope you guys listen to us now.
Thank you. Okay, next we have, um... Is it, uh, Araya Taylor? Uh, I'm sorry, Ariya Taylor, please? And I think there's, I think there's two students here, is it? Okay, okay.
Hi, my na, hi, my name's Ariya Taylor, and I'm in fifth grade at Leggett CLC. And I'm a student ambassador. I used to get in trouble all the time. Like, I almost get suspended like at least twice every month, but now I'm a student ambassador at Leggett CLC, and I get straight A's and my grades are good. And if you close Leggett down, then a lot of kids won't have any other place to go. What about the kids that have disabilities? If they don't have any schools that support autistic kids or any other kids of any color, race, or religion? Please don't make this hard for everyone. Please don't close down Leggett. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Gianni Diller, and I come from Cleveland Public Schools, and I am standing and I am putting my foot down for Leggett CLC. I have had the worst life ever to begin with. I've been bullied. I have fallen hair from everywhere. I got cut. I used to get tortured every day, and I wanted to end it all, until my auntie took me in. Akron Public Schools took me in and decided to finally give me the education that I needed, the education that was right for me. And I am now a straight A student. I never used to get honor roll or a merit roll in Cleveland Public Schools. I have the wonderful-est family ever, and if you close Leggett, where will I go? I will go back to Cleveland. What, and when I heard the meeting, there was nothing about Leggett. There was all of STEM. What about us? We need our education. What if they don't accept me? I have a whole bunch of reasons why you should not close down Leggett. And today, I decided to speak for my school, my Akron Public Community. So today, I shall stand for my school. I shall stand for Leggett. And if you close it down, it will make my heart deeply sink. From the day Leggett survives, it shall thrive forever. That is all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Was there something that you wanted to say? Please tell us your name.
Prince.
Prince, thank you, Prince.
Do you want to say somebody? Tell them you love your school? Yeah? All right. It's okay. Do you want to go to Leggett next year? Yeah, you love your school? Yes.
Thank you, Prince. Thank you. Next, I have, um, I've got Sammy, um, is it Ojo? Okay? Okay, I'm working on it. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm standing here on behalf of my kids. So I have two kids at Leggett CLC. And I really appreciate you guys humbly for what you have been doing, because it's not easy to put an institution together. So I, I appreciate you guys. And, and the Leggett CLC teachers, they are really excellent. And my twin brother be telling me, Daddy, you have to go there and represent us, because and I've discovered something unique among the teachers. They have excellent student-teachers relationship. Very, very excellent. So, and today, I am standing on behalf of my kids that if there's anything the Akron Public School can do to retain Leggett CLC, please, I will humbly appreciate on behalf of my children, because I thought I would be in the lab, because I'm a PhD student at the University of Akron. So I have so many presentations to prepare, but my kids, they kept on telling me, Daddy, you have to go there and represent us, that if Leggett is closed down, where do you want us to go? Because the teachers have really built confidence, morale, any names you can call it, as far as academics is concerned, are be built embedded in my children's academic career. So, and I think the level both of them are right now is very critical when it comes to academics. So, and I don't know if they will be able to find such exceptional characteristics of their teachers in any other schools if eventually, uh, Leggett CLC is closed down. Please, I'm appealing to you guys, if there's anything to do to retain Leggett CLC, we will all appreciate. Thank you very much.
So that, those are all the, their, their request to address the board that we had on our sheet for today. Just a couple of things I wanted to say. Again, it's, as customer, we don't reply to any individual, um, address, I'm sorry, folks who address the board, but let me say two things. One, no decisions have been made yet with regard to whether STEM School is ultimately going to go. And secondly, um, I, I have been genuinely moved, I think we all have, by the community's support, um, how loving and supportive and respectful you've all been and how you have approached this topic. I think this is what civic engagement looks like. I've spent the last probably week and a half talking with various members. Some of you were in the room. Ms. Bailey, I see you in the back. Thank you for the time Friday evening. She took, she took some time to school me Friday night on this topic. So appreciate you. And so while we have decisions to make, you know, I, I can say, I won't be, I won't be supporting any plans to change, make any changes at Leggett. I can't speak for my colleagues, but I think, I suspect we all feel the same way, or most of us do. So, again, I want to say thank you for coming out here this evening, um, and Monday night as well. And, um, I, you know, I think we, I think we'll have to find a different, better plan for STEM. So, um, so with that, we are going to recess into executive session pursuant to Ohio Bias Code 121 dot 22 G1, for the purpose of considering the employment and or compensation of a public employee or official of the school district. Is there a motion? I still move. It's been properly motioned by Mr. Perry. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Ms. Autry. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Dr. Hall.
Aye.
Ms. Jackson.
Aye.
Mrs. McKittrick.
Yes.
Dr. Moller.
Aye.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Mrs. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Okay, we stand in recess. We will have a, a, an action item after executive session, but we stand in recess at 6:26 PM. Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Okay, we are. Welcome back to this special board meeting on Wednesday, April 26th. We are reconvening at 8:15 PM. There is, we'll move to item 3.1, action from executive session. I wish to recommend entering into a service agreement to conduct the SuperNet search, which includes but not limited to a customized search process, informational flyer, recruitment and screening processes, and an allotment of funds included in the total, or specifically for consultant reimbursed expenses such as advertising, travel-related costs and shipping expenses with Ray and Associates Incorporated, effective April 25th, 2023, until the search is completed with the appointment of a new superintendent, a new district superintendent, total cost not to exceed $30,200 in no sense, to be charged to the Educational Service Center ESC funds account. Is there a motion?
So moved.
It's been properly moved by Ms. Autry. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Ms. McKittrick. Any discussion?
I do have something, President Hall.
Yes, Mr. Perry.
So I mentioned Monday night that I thought we should all give this some serious attention because I think it's a very important time for us in our APS lives, very important for the district. Our board has a lot of influx right now and a new member obviously is coming on tonight. And all of us have our own, you know, things we're looking for in APS. I just think it's a very important time to think about what we're doing right now with superintendent search. Is there a need to do it right now? We have to all answer that question for ourselves and make our vote accordingly. You know, I'm one vote, obviously, there's seven of us, but we gotta be serious about doing this right now and this is the right time to do it. So before we take a vote, just think long and hard about what do you want to do at this point?
Any other discussion? Mr. Alexander.
Yeah, I do agree too that we should make sure we cross our Ts and dot our Is, make sure we're ready for this, and we're ready, let's go ahead and do it.
Let me just reiterate also, President Hall, that, you know, this just happened 18 months ago before I was on the board. And, you know, I know the city is looking at us, the county is looking at us, and I think, you know, in my opinion, my humble opinion, you know, we're kind of rushing it a little bit. You know, we have an interim who's doing a great job right now, our schools are doing fine, there's a lot of turnover right now, everything in our city right now. So I think we should just think long and hard before we take that vote and make the decision.
Is there any further discussion? Ms. Autry.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I just wanted to add to that while I understand the points made, Mr. Perry, Mr. Alexander, this is one of our main roles as a board, and so the moment we were sworn in, we were sworn in to accept this role and the duties that come along with it. And so understanding the community has its concerns and certain constituents, I mean, we were elected to do a job and not to wait for someone else to do the job because we are the ones elected to do the job right now. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Ms. Autry, and Ms. McKittrick.
More than 10,000 City of Akron residents voted to put me in his seat, and I do this job for them, and so I think I'm ready to move forward with this and do the job that over 10,000 people elected me to do. Thank you.
Dr. Monar.
For a point of clarification for today's vote, we're voting on selecting the agency, but if, in the process, I believe they gave us several stages, so in stage one and stage two where we're gathering information from our community partners and key stakeholders, if at any point we do not find viable candidates, will we have the opportunity to reassess and reevaluate without any further penalties from this?
Yes, so to answer your question, so good question, Dr. Monar. So approving the contract tonight essentially is us hiring Ray and Associates to do a search. Whether that search takes three months or whether that search takes a year and three months, you know, that is, that's what we're hiring them to do. And so if we get to a point where we get an applicant pool that we don't like, or we don't think is quality, because I know that's the concern that's been expressed by several stakeholders, that they're concerned, I think, you know, the, I think the phraseologies, there are some who believe that the facts are clear, that they're, that we're not going to find viable candidates, and if that turns out to be true, this board does not have to move forward with that candidate pool. You know, and so, but however, if we do get a pool of viable candidates, to Ms. Autry's point, I think we have a responsibility to move forward. But again, that's a board decision, right? So as Mr. Perry said, we each have one vote, but again, and each of us is going to make it, is going to make a determination whether or not we think the pool is viable, right? But again, assuming, so again, so if there's no viable pool, yes, we can, we can press the pause button, and Ray and Associates, you know, there's no perverse incentive or moral hazard for them because, you know, they're contracted to do a search, you know, so they're not losing the business if we get a pool of candidates that we feel is subpar and we decide that we want to press the pause button and wait. They're not, you know, they're not losing out on business because, because the contract is to do a search, you know, so, so yeah, so hopefully that answers, I mean, that answered your question? Okay, all right, Roger that.
Let me just say one more thing, my last thing here. Now, I don't want it all to make it seem like I'm shirking my responsibilities as a board member. I know what I'm here to do, you know, period, but the reality of it is, this board may look entirely different in a few months, entirely different. And some of us who are here right now who will cast this vote may not be able to work with this new superintendent more than a few months at all, and that's a very important thing for me to think about.
Mr. Perry? Okay, was there, okay, Ms. McKittrick.
But the folks who are at these tables right now are the ones who've been here and are better equipped to make that decision than six or seven or eight months down the line to maybe three people who've never been here before.
Maybe. Ms. Jackson.
I just want to say, I hear you, Joe, and I also had concerns, and as we keep reiterating here, because I didn't want to feel the pressure of rushing into selecting, being forced to select a candidate because they were before us. I've been reassured, and that's why I'm comfortable at this point, that by the selection of this firm, it is not pressing up us against a wall to just pick any candidate, because that would not be wise, and that would be us not being good servants of the people who has, who have elected us. But for us to move forward, to see what quality candidates come, how they align with the district, how they meet the goals of the district and what the district needs to move it forward, I think is wise and is what our constituencies are expecting of us. But I do think to your point, we don't want anyone to just come in to fill the seat because our current interim, as you have stated, is doing a good job. We seem to be kind of settling things and moving forward as we close out a school year. But to select a firm to bring us candidates now, at least so we can see where we're at, because if we don't find any, we don't find any, and we know we have an able-bodied interim currently, but if we do, then we're in better shape. I just think it's a good place not to feel forced because we don't have to select anyone if we do not agree, and it's going to take a majority vote, and we all have votes, and I think a majority of us are not going to just vote anyone into place. So I just kind of want to reiterate that to your point because that was my concern as well, and I feel reassured after our meeting that that is not going to be a concern, that we're going to feel forced to have to pick just anyone, nor should we.
Yeah, I think that's well said, Ms. Jackson. Is there other, other discussion? Yeah, so let me just make a final comment before we vote on this. You know, it's, it's been pointed out to me several times now that this board may look different in November, but it may not look different in November, and so, you know, I think that, you know, those of us who are here now, I think, have a responsibility, and I just don't think that, I mean, what we're, what we're, what we're not talking about is the fact that there are some politics in this community, and there are some, and there are some parties that may not be supportive of some of us, some of us who are up for reelection, but, but we can't govern this school district from a place of fear, you know. We were elected for a four-year term, not a three-year and four-month term. We elected for a four-year term. And I think it's interesting, you know, that, that some of the folks that seem to take umbrage with us potentially moving forward with the search are folks who probably, you know, disagreed when President Obama was trying to fill a Supreme Court seat. Now granted, these are not Supreme Court seats, but, but the point is, it's still the same. When we elect people for office, we elect them for four-year terms, not for three-year and four-month terms, you know, so, and when we got elected four years ago, those who, those of us who were elected four years ago, those voters cast those votes knowing that they were electing us for four years, you know, so, Mr. Perry, I don't, I don't think you're suggesting, or at least I'm not suggesting that you're shirking your responsibility, but what I would say is that I believe that I have a responsibility to do this job, the entire job for, for my entire term, you know, and so, some of the folks who have reached out to us, some of you, I know they've reached out to several of you as well, you know, some of them have asked me, you know, hey, I mean, what if you don't find good candidates? Would you still move forward anyway? I said absolutely not, you know, so, so again, you know, and yet, we're still sitting here having this, this debate. So again, so there are seven people, seven, seven people on this board, and I know that there are varying constituencies in this town who reach out to some, several of us on this board and have requested us to vote or not vote a certain way, and, but that's politics, you know, that's, that's how this works, and so, but I do want to say to all of you that have expressed commentary that I respect your points of view, even if I respectfully disagree with your points of view, that's what makes this board this board. We are not other public entities that, that take shots at each other publicly and, and fail to act in a way that's professional. This board, and I'm very proud to say that, that even when we disagree, we, we don't get disagreeable. I'm proud of that. So regardless of how any of you vote tonight, we're still one board, we're still one team, and we're still here for these kids. That's the true north on our compass. So having said that, is there any further discussion? Okay, we'll do roll call. Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
No.
Dr. Hall, aye. Ms. Jackson.
Aye.
Mrs. McKittrick.
Yes.
Dr. Monar.
Yes.
Motion carries, six to one.
Motion carries, six to one. Next, I'll take, thank you all for your discussion and votes, next I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I so move.
It's been moved by Mr. Perry, and seconded by Ms. Autry. Okay, we'll do roll call. Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Dr. Hall, aye. Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Ms. McKittrick.
Yes.
Dr. Monar.
Yes.
Oh, you're already on yes, you've already converted from aye to yes already? I thought I had you with the ayes, okay, okay. She's already, you were aye, the very first one, you were aye, I'm like, okay, I got another aye on here. We've gone to yes, we've gone to yes. Okay, Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Okay, and Ms. Autry.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. We are in adjournment at 8:28 PM. Thank you.